We're we only have seven hundred.
Sound off.
It's filing pretty high.
Mark?
I remember this time.
Okay.
Either that or we gotta raise it up from five to twenty-five. Phone goes off.
Exactly.
It's three o'clock. Call the meeting to order. Remind everybody there's a copy of the Open Meetings Act on the east of all the commissioners' room. Roll call, please.
Meyer?
Yes.
Harris?
Yes.
Knapper?
Yes.
Raisig?
Yes.
Blue?
Yes.
Rise for the Pledge of Allegiance.
The Pledge of Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Do we have any changes in the agenda? Any additions or corrections, board? Do you have anything you want to add or? If not, entertain a motion for approval.
I'd move that we approve the agenda as presented.
Is there a second?
All seconded.
Any discussion? We're just gonna call a roll. We don't have our little buttons.
Harris?
Yes.
Blue?
Yes.
Meyer?
Yes.
Knapper?
Yes.
Raisig?
Yes.
Okay, I want to remind everybody that we do reserve the right to enter to a closed session anytime during this meeting if we feel it's necessary. Okay, uh, mo- motion to move into Board of Equalization?
I'd move that we move into the Board of Equalization.
Is there a second?
All seconded.
Any discussion? Call a roll, please.
Blue?
Yes.
Knapper?
Yes.
Harris?
Yes.
Raisig?
Yes.
Meyer?
Yes. Okay. Purpose of this meeting is to discuss and consider correcting and selecting the hearing dates for the file twenty twenty-three, property valuation protests. Was Carrie gonna be up here? Do we know? Anybody?
No, she's leaving early.
What's that?
She'll be leaving early.
She's leaving early? Is that what she said?
Yes.
Okay. Mark, are you speaking on behalf of the the office?
I can.
Okay.
As the property tax minister, I can take over for Mark, give him a little break. Uh, good afternoon. My name is Ruth Sorenson, R-U-T-H-S-O-R-E-N-S-E-N. And, um, since there's no values being changed here today, we do not need to have an assessor certificate holder in front of the board. It's only when there's values being changed. So, what we're going to do today is my staff and I have been working this week in the assessor's office, and I can tell you that Carrie and Anna Marie and Dave are doing phenomenal jobs. Um, they're taking care of all the people at the counters. They're keeping up with different types of tasks. Yesterday, we had a tax increment financing issue. Then we had an accelerated property tax issue, so we're gonna have taxless corrections. So, we're really educating them and training them as we go along, and they're doing really well. They're really getting to know the MIPS, the MIPS, uh, computer system. So, um, today, we still have a hundred and fifty-eight. I think you were handed a list with a hundred and fifty-eight. Um, protests have been filed that don't have hearing dates, that can't fit within the date that was on that notice. So, what we thought we would do is, uh, well, prior to saying that, let me just indicate that through the work that we've been doing, we've had one protest withdrawn, and we have fifteen that we have found in contact with the property owner, and they have said, "I don't need a hearing." So, fifteen, no, no hearing needed, and one withdrawn. And that's just in the last two days. So, we're anticipating that to become a larger number as we go on. So, saying a hundred and fifty-eight, perhaps some of the persons on this list can move into those sixteen slots that we just opened up. So, we may only be talking about a hundred and forty or so. So, what we thought we would do is just send these notices out to the, um, these property owners on this list, and you'll see Magnet Solution is, they're forty-three, like sixty of them, fifty, fifty-something. So, it would go to Magnet Solutions and, and anybody else that has is on this list. What we would do is just create a, a change, it's not a change of valuation notice because the value is not changing. They've already filed the protest. So, the notice would go to these property owners that are not scheduled, indicating that we go, the hearing dates will now be between these dates. And I s- I recommended July first to August fourth, and I don't know if that fits in everybody's schedule or not. Only because that will allow the board to hear eighteen, nineteen, twenty, twenty-one, as I recall, four days, then you'll have a weekend, and then you'll have two days.
What was the date again?
That I am looking at.
The date that you just said?
I'm looking at, uh, July thirty-first to August fourth.
Oh, July, I thought you said July first.
Thirty-first, I'm sorry, thirty-one.
Okay, I was gonna say that was gonna be.
We'd be a little late, yeah.
A little late and a little long.
So, um, these notices would just be sent to these property owners to indicate that their hearing will be scheduled between these dates as opposed to by July twenty-fifth. And, um, then we would be able to schedule the hearings and you could meet. I don't know if you would need all of these all this whole time or not, only because I looked at the list that was in the clerk's office, and if we were to remove the dinner hour, you could move up three, four, five, six protests that day, and you could probably be done by seven each night. And then if we open this up, then you would not have to be here on the weekends. So, that's what we're recommending. That's what we're suggesting.
I have a question. So, on the, on the re-noticing or whatever we call it, are you going to include the eighteenth through the twenty-fifth like we already had so that, do we have to then schedule them between July and August, July thirty-first and August fourth if you don't include them is my question?
Yes, yes. It would be, they'd be scheduled between July thirty-first and August fourth.
Even if we could have fit them in?
Well, no, what I'm saying is we're, we're gonna work on fitting them in, those that we can fit in.
Okay.
And so then, um, perhaps we should include, you know, the original dates with this, and you, you may still be.
And extend it to the fourth, yeah.
You may still get a hearing between those dates, but we're extending it then also to July thirty-first, so that's a good idea.
Thank you.
Um, this is unusual, unique, because, um, we've not had this situation where an assessor has vacated an office, um, during protest season, so we, we two are working through this and doing what we can. Jean has offered, and Kelly as well, to, um, photo.
Lisa.
Lisa.
Kelly.
Lisa. So, they have offered to help with, like, photocopying the books for you all as we get through these protests that you all have, and to, um, I think we created a spreadsheet, the spreadsheet for everybody to get a copy of, and then also to pull the property record cards for these parcels that have not been pulled yet. So, thank you to the, to the both of them for meeting and offering to help with that. And, um, that is basically what I'm asking for at this point is if we could fill in some of these and we can sure talk, we, we're emailing Kelly her office with the dates of the hearings that are scheduled that are no hearing needed. And so, we're emailing them once a day, and then you can move them, some of these property owners.
So, you're requesting to move into the next week, uh, the week of the twenty-fourth also? Or not?
You're hearing, you're hearing until the twenty-fifth. We've already got through the twenty-fifth scheduled.
Okay, that wasn't aware, but that's.
That's the day, you picked the eighteenth through the twenty-fifth, and we were full. And so, we held off on last day of filing. We got like a hundred and fifty protests filed on the last day probably. And so, we didn't even schedule anything because we didn't have a time slot. Right, so we have hearings scheduled from the eighteenth, nineteenth, twentieth, twenty-first right now, and then the.
Twenty-fourth.
Twenty-fourth and twenty-five. So, then you give you a little break there, four days, and come back then that Monday.
So, you're saying, um, then set aside the July thirty-first through August fourth? Is that what you're saying?
Yes, um, unless we can have the clerk go ahead and schedule them in, and maybe you won't have to be through the fourth. But we'll just get that notice on there in case.
Go and make it that big and hope it's less.
Correct.
Right. We can always be less.
That would be great.
Right, but.
And that's why I wanted to.
But we need to commit to that, is what you're saying.
Unless there's another date and time that you're looking at, but I had talked to, with Lisa, and you're running into budget hearings. And so, we, I don't want to get too far into August. And then August twentieth is when we need to get our values all set. All the board's decisions have to be entered in the CAMA system and reports run.
And normally, our deadline's the thirty-first, right?
Twenty-fifth.
Always the twenty-fifth.
Always the twenty-fifth.
So, norm- and so you're already allowing for an extension because of the urgency.
Yes, this is an exception because the value is not changing. So, if we put this through as clerical error, um, you only use clerical error if the value changes, and the values aren't changing. And we're gonna advise the property owners to do not refile your protests. We have it, your value's not changing from what you've already received.
What about the feedlots?
I'm sorry.
I'm sorry, go ahead.
Are the stuff coming in on the feedlots?
I don't know if they received any protests on the feedlots yet. I don't believe.
Wait, they're standing those for thirty days?
Right, till July twenty-ninth.
And those, those will come in August?
They'll come in by July twenty-ninth, and you'll know, you'll have thirty days. You'll have to hear those and then get the board decision in thirty days.
Ruth, you, you had said that their values didn't change. What I, I, I guess I've, I've lost, I'm lost somewhere.
All right, their values are not going to change from the, the notice that they received with the incorrect dates.
Right.
So, this notice that's going is gonna have that same value on it that they already received.
So, they've already, they've already protested it.
Right.
All, all, all we're telling them is that you're not going to be scheduled on that week of the eighteenth.
Eighteenth to twenty-fifth, correct.
You're gonna be scheduled on the, on the next round.
Right, correct.
And that's this list of people?
That's that list of people.
Right, so this is, um, this talks about a clerical error report. That's not what this really is, right?
There's, there's another report that does not indicate clerical error.
Okay.
The heading reads that.
It, it should read, "Protest filed, hearing dates are changing."
That says clerical error report.
Yeah, that's what they said.
I'll go get the corrected. Thank you for pointing that out.
And that's just wrong.
Well, right, we.
The title's wrong.
I researched it last night, and I thought, you know, we just need to, um, not call this a clerical error because the value is not changing from what they've already protested and received.
The only thing that's changing is, um, we're, we're saying that, um, it's not just the eighteen through the twenty-fifth that's possible, but now it's also includes August or thirty-first through.
August fourth, if that's what you, if that's what the board approves. Or you can continue on, and we can work through the weekends and try to work till nine o'clock and get them done. That's your other option.
Because, I mean, there's possi- we could be moving through these rather quickly. And, and, uh, you know, as the protests come through, and some of those could be maybe rescheduled, you know, towards the end of the week or something. I, I don't, I don't see us sitting here for thirty or forty minutes or whatever with, you know, with, with protesters.
What I'm seeing is that, I'm hoping that, um, we would set aside those days.
If needed.
But that it takes a whole lot less than that.
Sure, sure, I understand.
That's what my hope would be. But I realize that if we set a date for somebody on August second, and then they say, "Well, I gotta do it August second," then we're kinda stuck with that, right? But many people, when you call them, they're able to come in and do it earlier, I think.
I think as the assessor's office keeps working through the protests and we're getting their backup over to them because, like I said, we didn't have any time slots, so that's where our crunch is. But if she includes the eighteenth and then goes through the August fourth, I, I, I don't think we're gonna need it, honestly, from what I've seen in the past.
How many, how many total do we have? How many total do we have now, Kelly?
I'd say seven hundred.
Approximately.
Approximately seven hundred total.
Hundred fifty-eight?
No. Oh, I'm sorry. Yes, it does. Yes, it does. We have about five hundred in the assessor's office now, five hundred, some odd.
Five twenty.
I think it's gonna be over eight hundred.
Okay. Yeah, so what, what we have in the assessor's office right now is about five twenty, five hundred and twenty that have hearing dates set. And we're work, working through those and calling those property owners to see we're, we came up with this value because you only had two bathrooms, not three bathrooms. And so, we're correcting all of those market characteristics as we go through. And so, um, so we call the property owner back, we put it in the system, we recalculate the value, and we let them know what it is. And they're like, "Oh, well, I don't wanna bother coming to a hearing then," so we're taking those off the list.
How did that get to where it's at today by, you know, how did those get increased without people going out looking at them? That's, it blows my mind.
I, I can't tell you how long it has indicated three bathrooms or two bathrooms if the property owner never realized it in prior years. That happens.
Not everybody checks that out.
Yeah, a lot of people don't look at the minute details on their property record cards. It just say, "Yeah, well, the value went up again, so I'm just gonna, it's okay."
And every once in a while, they don't allow us in.
That's correct. That's absolutely correct.
And we have to assume some things.
Did we, did we not have a blanket across the board fifteen percent increase over all properties?
I don't.
Scotts, Scotts Bluff and Gearing, I think, did.
Different neighborhoods have different percent increases.
Because it was my understanding that there were two increases, one in neighborhood and one all the way across both Scotts Bluff and Gearing. Is that, is that, would that be incorrect?
You're not accurate. What was it?
Say that again, kinda, I'm sorry.
I think Scotts Bluff and Gearing got like fifteen, and then the small towns got different ones.
But that was, that was per, that was the whole, the whole town, Scotts Bluff, the whole town of Gearing, correct?
It was a blanket.
That was a blanket increase.
Fifteen percent on the structures.
Right, and then, then did we go into neighborhoods and do another increase but by neighborhood?
No. Well, um, in the report and opinion that I wrote, it was a blanket fifteen percent across everything, but some areas got a little bit more in the increase, depending on what the.
Where's that derived from when they don't go look at things? I don't get that. How do you put a blanket out there and say, "Oh, that was a little more?"
Well, it's, um, it's based on the sales in the area, and so we've compiled the whole spreadsheet of all the sales. So, that's what we're looking through as well as we go through the protests, what sales happened in this neighborhood. If there's no sales there, then we go into where that subject property is and look at the neighboring property, and how similar are they? Square foot, bedrooms, bathrooms, finished basement, unfinished basement, um, garages, things like that. We're, and so what they, my understanding is recently they've been relying on pictometry as far as looking at the visuals of the property. And then, um, if there's a sale, they'll go into those properties and see, confirm the data.
I, I, I think I, I think I understand the neighborhoods.
Right.
If you have a neighborhood that, that had a lot of sales and the others aren't catching up, then obviously we have to catch up. What I don't understand is the, the full city of Scotts Bluff and the full city of Gearing getting the increase. What, because not the, the s- I, I, I can't wrap my head around that, Ruth, I'm sorry, that's.
No, I understand. And what, what the assessor will do is look at the sales in the area.
The, the whole city?
Um, yes. They'll look at what's happening, and then they'll look at the land value. Is the land, is the lot values, are the lot values sufficient? And if they're still low, then they have to look at improvements. And I believe it, this year, the improvements were the ones that needed to be increased because they hadn't been increased in a number of years.
For the whole city, not, not, not market areas?
Right. Market areas is agriculture land. Neighborhoods is, is the residential city.
Neighborhoods, whatever, whatever you want to put on it.
Correct.
And when we talk neighborhoods, we're talking, I don't know, what, a hundred houses or something maybe, or fifty or whatever?
Yeah, it's, um, you can look at neighborhoods. Sometimes there's many more than that. Depends on the size of the homes and the lots. What I personally have been doing is just looking up that street where that subject property is and looking at three or four. Because generally, generally, we use three or four comparables when we look at the neighborhoods.
Now, I have to ask you a question. I, after I got my yellow card, I went down and visited Angie on my personal property, personal real estate. And I asked her how she arrived at, you know, getting this big of an increase on that. And she said, "Well, they have to have ten sales in order to work off." Is that correct?
That's, um, statistics. That's the, um, sale assessment ratio. If you have ten sales, that has stemmed from back in the day with the Tax Equalization Review Commission. They used to only look at ten sales or more, and I've really encouraged them not to do that.
Anyway, she told me, she said, "I did not get ten sales." She said, "I had nine sales," but she said, "I pushed it over." What, this is just what she told me. She said, "I just kicked it over, and this is how, wow, wow, that black was." You know, that's, I, I got a pretty big increase myself, so I'll be standing where you're at next, next week.
Okay.
I can't wait.
Um, I, I, I can't talk for what Angie.
Well, I'm just telling you what she said. I'm just asking if that's.
Well, um. I, I don't know.
I don't, I don't know how you guys keep moving the goalposts. If that's the way it was, why would that change? If that's how it worked, how?
Well, the goalpost isn't changing. It's always gonna be ninety-two to a hundred percent level of value. Or Turk is gonna make us, you adjust all the properties. And what will happen is if the county assessor wants to keep it at ninety-two percent and misses it by, and only it comes to ninety-one point three, Turk's gonna adjust you all the way up to ninety-four percent. So, you're gonna get a larger bump than what the assessor was looking at to get you to just over ninety-two or ninety-three.
Now, we're back to where, nobody came out looking at anything. I mean, I got a, a blanket appraisal. I got a forty-four percent increase. There's a lot of people out here got bigger increases than that even, and nobody's came to look. I, I don't, you know, I don't, I don't quite see, I, I look at a piece of paper and say, "Yeah, this is right." Your condition, conditions involved, there's a lot of different.
Swallowy condition, and the, and the, the concern and the issue that we've had, and, and I've had discussions with Commissioner Harris and others, there's two reviewers in the office right now. How many parcels are in the Scotts Bluff County? You can't get to every home to inspect it.
And we're, we're fully aware of that.
Right. But what I'm saying is they can't.
We fully understand all that, and I, I've been doing it for a few years. A, a, a good protest year for us is three, maybe four hundred protests, and we can get them done in a week. And we're pushing seven hundred.
Over seven hundred.
Over seven hundred, and I know that there are some folks that didn't file that probably should have, or were told, "Don't bother," or whatever the case might be. We could have been well over a thousand protests this year, which is telling me something's wrong. There's, there's, there's issue out here someplace. Uh, then the phone calls that we've all, I don't know whether all of them, at least that I've received, and that we've all talked about, folks aren't happy with what, with what is happening, and, and we're not getting the answers that we're, that we need to have. And that's, that's why I'm asking you now. That's, that's the concern, and that's what we're gonna get during our protests. Same kind of, same kind of questions.
Bear in mind that the residential market has changed.
I'm fully aware of that.
So, it was flat for a long time, and values didn't change, and people were happy with that. Well, now the market has changed. The sales are coming in a lot higher. And so, since we're a sales state, market value state, the values have to be increased because if you look at the assessment to sale ratios, you're not gonna reach that ninety-two to a hundred. And so, the assessor has the obligation to increase what is low. Is Gearing low? Is Scotts Bluff low? Any other small towns, um, are they low? And increase those to get them to where it will pass the statutory requirement of ninety-two to a hundred. And also remember, if these were low for a number of years, which appears they have been, those property owners weren't paying their fair share compared to what other surrounding county property owners are paying.
See, and I don't, I disagree with that because, because of the, the number of years that there have been consistent increases. I, I, and I'm talking about, for me, I've had, I've had a thirty percent increase over the last two years.
Right.
Uh, and there haven't been that many sales in the area that, where I live, anyway. So, I, when, and I could understand that if, if the sales were down and the numbers weren't there. The sales, they're, 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 the sales, and they're all equal. They're, they're a little bit here, a little bit there, whatever. But, but we're at a, we're at a point where, uh, folks are really, really concerned, and they're really upset about what's going on. And I don't think anybody would be concerned if they had a four, five, six, seven percent increase. But we get some folks that are getting forty percent, sixty percent, thirty percent, forty percent, whatever the case might be, in order to, the answer they're getting, "Well, we need to catch up." "Well, what about the, the fifteen or twenty percent I got last year?" And those, those are the things that, that we as commissioners are dealing with, and we don't have answers for them. And we're gonna, and we're gonna get hammered out here during protest week on those. And we, and we have to have an answer for them. That's, that's, that's why I'm asking you now.
Don't you agree, Ruth, that, uh, with the economic climate we're in right now for the last three years, the dollar is worth fifty to sixty percent of what it was three years ago? You could buy diesel fuel for two dollars or less than two dollars a gallon. It's over four dollars a gallon. Diesel fuel didn't get more valuable. You can, you can only buy this much with the dollar. The dollar's only buying this much. So, now it's taking me twice as much money to buy the same house because the mon- the dollar isn't worth anything. The people are getting double hammered here because their, their dollar isn't buying anything, and we're jacking the taxes up, so they've gotta make four times the dollars to pay double the taxes because the dollar's cut in half. Somehow, we've gotta make this come together so it's fair to these people.
Well, again, we're a market value state, and I'm aware of property owners that were in bidding wars when they were selling. And I'm sure you've heard about that in Scotts Bluff as well. There are people that were bidding and paying more than was being asked for those properties.
That's a California trick.
We didn't have much of that here, but I know there's.
But there, it has happened, and it does happen. And I know, I have family members that were trying to find a home, and they got outbid.
They were probably moving out of big cities, big areas, right?
They were trying to move from Lincoln to, to Cheyenne County and also looked to.
You know, we've had people from New York City out here trying to buy real estate.
Uh, you know, um, again, um, I don't know who the buyers are, and that doesn't matter who the buyer is.
Well, and that's, and, and now we're getting, you know, specific on, on a home sale or whatever the case might be. But the, again, the concern I have is this blanket increase. And, and I think the question was asked, I don't know, two or three meetings ago. Somebody said, "Well, can we go back and just give everybody a fifteen percent decrease?" And we were told, "No."
You would, well, if you wanted to do that, you would petition the commission, the Tax Equalization Review Commission by July twenty-sixth. And with a petition to the Tax Equalization Review Commission, you will have to come up with statistics showing that you still fall within ninety-two to a hundred. So, if you want to do that as a board, that's how you do it.
Did we petition when we raised everybody fifteen percent?
Did we petition?
Yeah.
Uh, you could have attended the Turk hearings.
No, my, my question is, when we raised everybody in Scotts Bluff fifteen percent?
Every parcel in this, in this county, ten percent. What would happen if we'd raised every parcel ten percent? Lower the mill, everybody pay the same tax, nothing would change. Would be very, very simple. Instead of doing, doing these auctions every year, uh, it's just, it's ridiculous.
If you increase everybody ten percent, you have to make sure you fall within that ninety-two to a hundred percent statutory range. You can't, it's, they don't just pick a number. I can tell you that. What they have to do is they have to look, they create spreadsheets, they analyze the data, they go through all the information, and they say, "How, how can I get this to meet the statutory requirements?" So that Scotts Bluff County or any county is not called in for an order to show cause. Because if you call them for an order to show cause, you have to bring in plenty of evidence, and you risk that you'll be adjusted to ninety-four percent of the range.
The whole county or just the area?
Um, it would depend on what, what you are, what, what are the show causes.
Yeah.
I know there's been, like, I, we had one in, I think it was Cass County, where there were four areas, three areas that they've called in. Douglas County, we had neighborhoods, and that went up to the Supreme Court. So, again, the blanket adjustment is we look at land, is the land component, does that, is that equalized? Is that what, um, will bring us it within the range? And when I've been looking at these protests, the lands in those neighborhoods are the same, the lots. So, it's the improvements, absolutely, and that's where the fifteen percent came on. So.
That fifteen percent increase, um, can be and was, um.
We've got these already, Mark.
Done at the assessor level.
Correct.
Right?
Correct.
And that doesn't come from, does that ever come from direction from your office, Ruth?
What, what we'll do is we look at the sales, we look at the areas, and we just talk to the county assessor and indicate, "You're low in this area. Why don't you take a look at what's going on?" It could be that their costing is incorrect or that their depreciation is incorrect. Why don't you take a look at that, see if you could change your tables to bring it up to the current market, to the current date? I can tell you, next year, well, afterward, through protests, we're gonna be working on your costing and depreciation tables. They're not good. And so, a lot of the protests that we are eliminating are based on that cost and the depreciation that's in those tables. And I don't know if it was a, an appraisal that would happen in the county. I'm concerned that the county's going to have another whole new reappraisal only because what I'm seeing behind the scenes in the books is, um, concerning.
Can, can you elaborate a little bit more on, on that? We, you said that there's, um, some of the pro- We, you said that there's, um, some of the protests that have been filed have, you've, you've gone through the CAMA system, and you've found these errors, such as the depreciation stuff. Um, how approximately, are we still at that fifteen percent or ten percent of properties?
Uh, most likely. I mean, we brought it up from ten to sixteen, but again, it's not a fast process. We are going to continue to work through the weekend on this. My staff will, my staff that do not get paid overtime. And, um, we'll get back to, on, to Kelly's, Kelly's office. Kelly, Kelly's office, um, on Monday, to get those all updated, and to let her know what dates are open up. Because we won't be calling the property owners on, over the weekend, of course. We'll call them on Monday and see what we can, what we can arrange.
So.
But they're very, they're very, um, understanding.
So when we spoke last time, it was approximately ten to fifteen percent of the properties that had been reviewed. Now we're only at sixteen total properties. Is that right?
Um, no, that's sixteen that are gonna be rescheduled for hearing. We opened up those hearing slots.
Right.
I don't, yeah, I don't know how many we have. Sarah Scott will come up. She's overseeing Mark and the process while I work on the other projects.
Yeah, so I, we have fifteen people that have acknowledged, yes, that's okay. We have a number of phone calls that are out, um, waiting for calls back, and we have a number more to work through. We have not worked through them as fast onsite as we anticipated, just due to the volume of other issues that have come up in the office and the need to train. So that's why we're gonna work through the weekend, um, uh, without distractions or other things going on, to try to get a better, um, a better number. But I, I can't give you a percentage at this time. I would tell you from what I've seen while I'm here, it's growing. It's a growing percentage. I don't know what it is.
I think that's, that's what concerns this board the most, is that we, we had, we've, we've identified these errors, we've found these errors, and, um, and these are just of the properties that have filed protests. And so if, if we, if we say that there's, if we call this a sample, then, you know, if we're gonna, if we're, if the entire county is representative of this sample, then we have fifteen or twenty percent of the properties in the counties, and the county has been mis-assessed or wrongfully assessed, then, um, what, what mechanism do we have to, um, to correct that for the folks that haven't protested?
And, you know, in my opinion, you don't have a mechanism. And, and know that fifteen to twenty percent isn't, isn't a, and like, I don't know if the number's twenty percent, we'll see. Um, but it isn't a unheard of number. I double O says that when everything's good, you can expect ten percent of people to protest. And so it's not, it's not that it's an outrageously high number, it's that, hey, we've seen some things that need to improve, and we're gonna work on improving those. But that is not a mass appraisal something that, through, through the board you can correct. That takes, um, your option, is to petition the Turk for a class or sub-class adjustment. You have to, your burden of proof is on you to present statistics that say this is over-assessed. Um, we, the Department of Administration presents statistics at statewide equalization. And if it were that simple, it would have been fixed by now. Um, it's something that needs to be looked at individually. So know that you only hear from the people generally that are over-assessed, right? You're not hearing from the people that are under-assessed. There is that out there too. Um, it's, it takes some, it's gonna take some tables. It's not, it's a, it's a process that needs to be done, but it's not something that's, can't be, it's not extremely burdensome. It's just gonna take some work, and we can work with the staff over the next year to work, work with that.
And those are the things that you were talking about having a concern about, Ruth?
Sold and unsold properties? Correct. And know that if you've had three hundred in years prior, there's always been the next door neighbor that didn't protest, that their values didn't get changed, so nothing, there's not, not anything the board can do unless you petition Turk. And if you wanna correct the whole entire county, it's the reappraisal and the cost of that.
Are you aware that we corrected three hundred million dollars in errors last month?
That's the feedlots.
First was three properties that were, came in at two hundred million dollars. Their values were probably just under two hundred thousand, and they came in at two hundred million. And then we corrected feedlots in about a hundred million dollar readjustment. So three hundred million in, in one month that we just adjusted, I mean, surely that's gotta go into your file somewhere, and it, and it, it could be your fifteen percent.
Well, um, I, I've been looking at those feedlots, and the values minus the thirty-five percent, those are, those are low. We're gonna have to look at them again next year.
What happened to the, what happened to the formula that we came up with two years ago on the hundred, hundred dollars per head? That file was supposed to be pulled and, and, and looked at. Did, did that ever happen?
That, um, if I had known about that, it wouldn't have happened.
Why not?
You, you can't value by cattle. You can't value by head.
Why not?
Because it's by sales, land improvements.
There haven't been any sales on feedlots.
There have been.
Okay, well, I'm wrong then. I'm sorry. I apologize.
That's all right, and the, and the county assessor can also look in the state sales file at surrounding counties, and there are sales of feedlots. And so that's what I'm looking at.
Surrounding counties, but not Scotts Bluff County?
There's some in Scotts Bluff, I thought.
I thought we were, I thought we were just dealing with Scotts Bluff County. I'm sorry, I, I didn't realize.
Well, I know, but the assessor can look at surrounding counties in our state sales file and find what feedlots have sold for, and compare that soil to Scotts Bluff soil, and determine if that sale is legitimate and valid to use. So we do have sales of feedlots that we can look at.
Okay.
I got a question.
Hmm.
Uh, are there any other counties in Nebraska that are in the same situation we are right now?
Good question, Mike.
Um, yes. Um, I had a county that had to re-notice ten thousand plus, change evaluation notices, this year.
You had, you had, you had what now?
I had a county that had to re-notice ten thousand plus.
Oh, re-notice, okay.
Re-notice them, because of a date error. And so they're going through this process as well. And they also are going through the process of people saying, our values are increasing, the sky is falling. And that's because of the bidding wars on these properties, homes, residentials, that, again, remember, we go back two years. It's just not today's dollar. It's back two years. And if you overbid last, two years ago, that's still being used as a, in, in the process of valuing the mass appraisal. And so those higher sales will drop off, and these lower ones will come in. And so you may, we just can't estimate what will happen next year.
Let, let me ask you a hypothetical question.
Oh, boy.
Cause I, and, and I hate to keep using the feedlots, but there's a bunch of them. There's, there's, there's a lot. What would be the consequences if this board, Scotts Bluff County Board, decided to go back to that formula that we did? It took us about a week to put all those numbers together. We met with, with the feedlot owners. It was something, and they were going to get an increase a, as a result of it, uh, if we decided to go back to that.
Hypothetically?
Yes.
The assessor could appeal to Turk. And the Turk, Turk would look at that and say, this is not correct, but.
The assessor could appeal to Turk if she doesn't, he or she does not, uh, agree with, with our, okay. Okay.
And right now, my teammate is the interim assessor. So, um, Turk will look at it and say, this, this is not an income cost or market value approach.
Okay.
So, and this is a technicality, and maybe this is, um, it's not an easy subject, but you, you met, you said earlier in the, in, in our meeting that the assessor's office had been vacated. Or, and I'm, I'm sorry for the, you know, the.
It's vacant, not vacated, vacant.
It's vacant, okay.
There's no one in that office that holds an assessor certificate, so it's vacant. Until such time as somebody that holds the assessor's certificate returns, or somebody else passes the exam.
How often is that exam given, Ruth?
I can hold an emergency exam if the assessor, assessor office is vacant, um, anytime. But it's every, uh, it's once a quarter. The next one is August.
August is the next one, okay.
Ruth, um, I know there's some information out there to, I'm trying to figure out, for each person, layperson in the county that's really unfamiliar with some of this stuff, how is the best way for them to understand this process? And how it works, and what the county assessor does in each county? Um, surely, there's a way. I've argued recently that surely we could have some written information, and there's probably some out there, that tells us how this is done, and in, in layperson's language, and so that people can understand it, preferably before they ever get here for protest, and that it gets said the same way every time, by everybody, virtually all the time. Um, and, uh, I'm just wondering, surely, if, if I'm in that position of, uh, being an assessor, or your position, or whatever, I'm saying, I need to make up a piece of literature that helps people understand what I'm doing and why I'm doing it. I'm sure we got that out there, don't we, somewhere?
Well, um, every county should have a valuation methodology. And I, I have assessors that fight that idea. And so we are getting closer, but the valuation methodology should be available for the commissioners and for the property owners. And also, they put together sales books, so you can look through what property's sold, and you can come to the assessor's office and look through those sales books to see what's sold, in what neighborhoods, what areas. And, um, but a valuation methodology would really be helpful. And if you, I don't, I, I have to review all ninety-three counties' reports and opinions, and there's probably a good thirty or so of the valuation methodologies.
About two thirds now.
Oh, we're about two thirds now, so it's increased. Um, so we're gonna really work on that. The other thing that I have offered to other boards, and I haven't offered it across the state, but sure, surely we could hold workshops. You know, if, if it's publicized and you have a big enough location, we can hold the workshop and take questions and have a PowerPoint and go through the process. Um, but again, it, it's gonna be, it has to be, each of the ninety-three county assessors will have a different type of depreciation on their tables, depending on what's happening in their counties, whether it's cookie cutter neighborhood or not. Um, and so it would have to be a more general type of overview, not saying, okay, you paid this much, you're gonna get this much depreciation, because we, you just can't do that.
Well, and I understand, um, not using percentages in that discussion, because they change. And not using specifics that change, but using generality information that says, we take this, and we do this, then we do this, and then we do this, and then that's how we come up with that number, and then each year we review it by doing this, and then we do this, and then we do this.
And you would want, you want the assessor to be able to come into your, your improvement to inspect. That has to be emphasized.
Well, and I, that should obviously be a, a, um, thing that's in that, but we would, you know, when we're here, we're always encouraging people. Has the assessor been out to see it? I remember, kinda. You know, we were here, and they said, no. They said, okay, let's do it right now, and she was on her way to go check a house out. And then she came back, and we had new information, and, um, but anyway, I remember that happened many times. That's not the way we want to do it, but it, it worked for a few. But, um, my big issue is just simply that we could somehow tell people, possibly in writing, um, prior to them even coming to the hearing, and, um, that they get told in a way that's, that, that hopefully, most people can understand. It's a complicated subject, quite honestly.
Absolutely.
And, um, it's not always easy to just say it verbally, and so you can imagine, when we're here, as you know, in a ten-minute hearing, it's hard to get the information out. Questions are asked. Most of the time, they're answered the same, um, if they're identical questions, but sometimes, um, I can see even the answers not being always exactly the same. And so if we have, the more we have in writing, the more that stuff doesn't change. Just a thought. Um, if we have any kind of written information, um, if anyone has any, and you can email it to me or whatever, I'd be interested in seeing it.
Do you remember when we saw the computer and we pulled up some stuff from Angie's page already?
Yeah.
Have you read that? I mean, does that, does that do what you want?
Yeah, and that was about one and a half pages, if I remember right.
And stuff from I double A O.
Um, but I read some of that.
It is, does that serve the purpose that you're looking for, but not, not exactly?
I think it helps some.
Okay. I'm just seeing if you remember, or have looked at it.
So, just a thought.
You, you had mentioned, Ruth, um, about some county assessors have that sales book where folks can come in and, and look at the sales that have taken place in the county, and kinda understand, you know, where, where the market is. Is, is that something that, that exists in our assessor's office?
Yes, um, Carrie showed it to me.
Okay. So, cause that, that's one thing we were, you know, probably going to ask. Um, typically during a protest hearing, you know, the, we, we, you know, the burden of proof is on the protester. Um, this board, um, would like to try something a little different, um, this year, and, and, and allow the assessor to explain to the property owner how they wrote, how they came up with their numbers, um, just to help explain that process, like, like Mark's talking about. Is that, um, you know, the, in order for the value to change, the, the protester's gonna have to be able to, you know, still have their burden, burden of proof, but rather than starting with the protester, start with the assessor to kind of explain how they got to the number that they, I see some.
Panic?
Raised eyebrows in the back.
Oh, you wanna try the answer?
Well, if I can, if I may, uh, we're in a unique position here in that we did not set these values, right? And so I would, I would say the burden of proof is on the protester, and the protester should go first. What we are doing, if we're recommending no change, we are trying to provide, we are providing comps. This is why we're saying no change. Here's some sales you can look at. You can show them, if you have a screen, you can pull it up. You can show them, this is why we think it's worth this, if that helps.
How can they protest no change? Why, why would they be here to protest?
No, I, if, if, if the assessor's recommendation is not to change the, not to change the value, if they, if our recommendation on the protest is no change.
Then they would basically wouldn't come to the hearing, and they would stay home.
Well, no, no, they would still come, because they wanna have lower value, right?
They're saying no change to what the yellow card says.
The yellow card, no, I'm talking about no change in their original.
Yes, 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 right. Yeah. So, yeah, they would come in. It's not the no hearing is what they're thinking.
I've, I've got another question. Um, so what was that process we did with the, with the feedlots? To, to take that thirty-five percent back off? It was a, what was that process called?
Very well, because a lot of them got a heck of a lot more than thirty-five percent. They got a lot more.
It was the new over/under value presented.
The over va, over/under value report?
Report, I believe.
This is, this is, this is the report.
Yeah.
The headline says, "The intensive category for feedlots had a thirty-five percent increase applied in error." This increase was applied to residential properties only, which I don't quite understand that, but.
So, so my question is, if, if we have all these other errors that we're finding. So, so my question is, if, if we have all these other errors that we're finding on all these other protests that have been filed. Um can the assessor submit an over/under value report for the whole county? And say, you know, we, cause, cause you, as you've said here today already, um the county more than likely needs a reappraisal. Complete reappraisal. So if that's the case, you know, and, and the media's gonna report that, that the property tax assessor said the Scotts Bluff County needs a reap- reappraisal.
Perhaps, I said perhaps, it's an option, but go ahead.
Then, then wouldn't it be fair to say, um let's, 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 let's back these off? Instead of doing a blanket fifteen percent on everybody, let's do a blanket two percent on everybody.
Do everybody.
And let's, and let's get a reappraisal done for next year.
Reappraise the whole county, get it right.
The, the issue of um overvalued, undervalued, I have to have it to you by July twenty-fifth, and I can't get through all those parcels.
Are we in a, are we in a situation here where with, with the condition of our assessor, is, is that a, do we have a, a window here? That could be wider because of the current state of the assessor?
No, there's nothing in statute that allows for that. Because it's a changing in of the values, you have to go through the whole process of a whole complete spreadsheet, have to present it to the board, have to show you the before and after. Have to reissue all those notices, mail them all out, open up a thirty day new protest window. And I need to have values set by August twentieth.
We did it with the feedlots, well, I mean.
Yeah, they'll be done by August twentieth.
Yeah. There, I mean.
We were early enough in the process.
There's, there's a way that we could do that with the individual protesters that come in, but I see your point is those that aren't protesting are still going to get those increases. They're still gonna get it. Without the, without the protests.
The only way you can remove a percentage adjustment is to petition Turk.
Is that per parcel?
It's um, no, they have to do it by class or subclass of property.
Okay.
And feedlots would not be a subclass, so I did not recommend that.
Well, I, just a thought on that, and that's the, um, you know, uh I think. All of us would have some interest in, and in fact Charlie brought it up early on about trying to um. Lower a whole group of properties all in one field swoop, but yeah, it would have to go to Turk. We would have the burden of proof and certainly at this date, I would say that that's gonna be almost impossible.
Well, you have till July twenty-sixth to file the petition and the Turk will hear it fairly quickly. Because they know values, have school reports and things have to be done by August twentieth.
Okay, I, and, and maybe I didn't understand your answer, Ruth. We have to go to Turk to lower it, but we don't have to go to Turk to raise it, is that, would that be correct?
Both. If you wanted to increase.
Did we go to Turk to increase all of Scotts Bluff or all of Gearing?
Yes, that went in the report and opinion to statewide equalization and the Turk looked through the whole report, asked questions. And it's that, hearing is held virtually, anybody can attend by WebEx. You can listen to your county being discussed, we discussed it, Turk blessed it.
So, so we got approval, the assessor's office got approval to do a blanket fifteen percent increase.
Correct.
For the city of Scotts Bluff and the city of Gearing.
Correct, because they came within the statutory level of value.
Worked at three hundred million errors and we need to as well on that, and errors go in on that at the same time?
Um it does, but we don't do it by value.
I'm confused.
This is, we gotta go by the increase. I mean, you're gonna look at the little increase.
No, we look at the sales and the statistics and the value is not in those statistics. So you're looking at mean, median, weighted mean, confidence intervals. And so what that will impact though is when we receive the school report and the certificate of taxes levied, we'll have to look at why the value changed. But once statewide equalization is over, changing value doesn't come back to statewide.
When were, when were we supposed to be notified of this WebEx with Turk?
I send out to the clerk that the Turk, all the reports and opinions are available. And you can pr- provide them to them, I don't know if, if she does or not, but the reports and opinions are available. And then I notify the assessors, and I can sure start adding county board members if you want, that the agenda's available and it's on the Turk website. And it generally starts about August, see, I get the abstracts by the nineteenth of March and the three big counties the twenty-fifth. I have nineteen total days to review all, all of those reports and opinions. Um so it's ninety-three times three, cause residential, commercial and ag, they all have to be reviewed. So we have nineteen days to review them, Turk then gets them by August seventh approximately. And then they review them and then they will start the opening sometime like April tenth, eleventh area timeframe. But their agenda is all public on their website.
I, I could tell you, this board was not notified that there was going to be a fifteen percent increase.
That's for sure.
Citywide.
That is a.
Do either Scotts Bluff or Gearing.
Or fifty percent countywide.
Well, um again, I encourage assessors to meet with their board to let them know the county actions.
I mean, the, the doors, the door's been left open already, we can't go back.
I understand.
We, we can't go back and fix that.
But hopefully this is a process that we can educate, you know, going forward to ma- get, set a meeting with the board, let them know your assessment actions. They're all listed in that report and opinion.
It's just, it's just solidifying personally how I'm going to handle the protests. Um, okay, all right, thank you, I appreciate that. I wish I would've, I wish I would've had that information ahead of time.
Well, you would've had the reports and opinions, she's nodding that you sent them.
I'm not used to looking for reports of opinions unless it's something that interests me.
Well, it's Scott, it was Scotts Bluff County. And so you look at Scotts Bluff County and I believe like maybe the tenth page in, county assessment actions.
And you guys see it? Okay, did you see it?
When, when did that come out, just out of curiosity?
We have to have it issued to Turk by April seventh this year, so April seventh.
That would be something I think I would, I would really have been interested in.
I send them to county clerks in the county, yeah, I do.
Did you get it?
Did you, did you see it?
I will have to look at my email.
I don't, I don't, I don't remember if, if it did come out, I sure don't.
And that's something we started.
I tried to look at all of them.
That's something we started about three years ago because I was hearing this from other board members.
Yeah.
And I said, how, what's the most efficient way for you all to get it? And they said, send it to the county clerk. So I started that a couple of years.
Kelly's, Kelly's, Kelly's good about getting information to us, she's, she gets on us cause you don't open everything, but she is good about getting it out to us, that's for sure. Okay, all right, I think we, we beat this one enough, yeah.
That's up to you now as to whether you wanna open up another window or just unless.
I think, I don't, I don't know that we've got the time for that, to be honest with you, we're at the seventh right now. Uh but a- again, and I'll reiterate, but I, what I said earlier, our, our normal protest, and this is gonna be my, I think, my twenty-first. Something like that, twenty or twenty-first, we're usually two to three hundred, Kelly, you and I have been through a lot of.
But I also went to our website and in twenty twenty, we had eight days, eight full days of protest hearings too. So this is not uncommon. And when I worked in the assessor's office, we had days upon days.
I, I'm fully aware of that.
The seven hundred number does not scare me at all, having worked in both offices. So I know we can do it.
What scares me is why is there seven hundred of them?
I agree.
I, I'm not afraid, I'm not afraid of seven hundred.
Because the sales reflect the value increase.
I'm not afraid of seven hundred at all. What, what, what concerns me is why there are seven hundred and the reasons for the seven hundred of the thirty and forty percent increases. That's what, that's what bothers me.
But we're not gonna be able to.
Yeah.
Deal with that between now and protest time.
Or not, absolutely not.
But to the extent that when, when there's additional time, I guess, available. Um I realize that eighty-five to ninety percent of this is state statute driven rules and regulation. And again, we have to be, the assessor has to be between, what is it, ninety-two and a hundred?
For residential, commercial.
Right, ninety-two and a hundred.
Sixty-nine to seventy-five for.
Ag, and so um that state statute driven and um, and that's not gonna change, I don't think, or not, not soon.
Well, some senators have tried to change it, so.
Yeah, but until it does, um we are where we're at based on that. And then of course, it's each um county um trying to stay within those parameters. And um it's, it's gonna be a continual fight, continual argument, continue. We have difficulty in making it um work. Um and so, but I think what we have to do for now is, I think we have to extend our new dates to July thirty-first through August fourth. And hope that, hope that we don't need that much.
Hope we don't need them. Exactly right, yeah.
We will all do our best.
Right. We will, when we get to the protest, need to certainly maybe visit a little bit ahead of time and. Because we are, most of the time we move through them pretty good. Every once in a while, we'll get hung up on one for forty-five minutes. And we can't let that happen too much.
I, I, I see one group in here where there's a lot.
Yeah, sixty, but no, and, and I'm talking particularly per parcel, but.
Yeah.
Um but I, I think for now, our only option is to agree on these dates to extend and then hope we don't have to use them.
Absolutely. And, and Kelly, you're absolutely right, I, you know, I've, we, we've been through Monday through Friday from eight in the morning till nine o'clock at night. And that's, we just know that, we know that. You know, the old rule was if you wanna get, you wanna schedule it eight o'clock on Friday night, cause you're gonna get what you want. By that time, the boards, the boards wore down, you're ready to roll.
I hate to say that.
But that's exactly what happens. And, and I'm okay with that, that's, you know, we signed up for this, uh we're, we're fine.
Are we ready for a motion then?
I think so.
I would move that we extend the dates for protest hearings to include July thirty-first through August fourth.
Okay, do we have, do we have a second on the motion?
I'll second that.
Is there any discussion? Kirk, call or roll, please.
Harris?
Yes.
Blue?
Yes.
Raisig?
Yes.
Meyer?
Yes.
Knapper?
Yes.
Okay. Uh, see, no other business?
Can we leave the Board of Equalization?
Oh, yes, we have to do that, I need a motion to.
I'll move to leave the Board of Equalization.
I'll second that.
Okay. Call or roll, please.
Knapper?
Yes.
Blue?
Yes.
Raisig?
Yes.
Harris?
Yes.
Meyer?
Yes, okay.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Don't start with me.